I am not.
Oh, I just started. You weren't ready?
No, I'm not. I was just seeing if you were ready.
Oh, you fooled me.
Let me know when you're ready, okay?
You are live.
Awesome, thank you. Good evening, Dyton, to the Town of Dyton Planning Board Meeting, regular meeting and public hearing for Wednesday, January 4th, 2023. Be advised that this is a public meeting, being video and audio recorded for cable broadcast. If you could join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, confirm the next meeting date for January 18th, 2023, at 7:00 PM. And on to the first order of business is item 4A, Review Act and Discuss on Wellington Acres Homeowners Association with regards to Status of Development Assessment Turnover and Proposed Draft Homeowners Association Agreement Amendment. In your packets, there is a request for...to continue. Says email from John Mitchell dated December 22nd. Says, Dear Miss Easterday, please take this as a formal request that Attorney John Zajac and myself, on behalf of our clients, Loops Construction and Wellington Acres, homeowners association are requesting a formal continuance of the review, the approval of the homeowners association agreement from the boards, January 4th meeting to January 18th, so that we might complete the work required by the Stormwater Committee and meet with that committee before your meeting on the 18th. Take care for assistance. And, board for his patience, happy holidays, John. I don't think I have to accuse myself because I'm not acting on anything, right?
Right.
Okay. So, um...I'll abstain from the vote, but somebody want to make a motion to accept this?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion before taking two vote? Here are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's three ayes and I won't abstain. So that's pushed to the 18th. Next item on the agenda is 4A2, and that's Center Street Woods Subdivision, map 9, Lot 57, and lots 57 and 152, request for minor modification. Is the applicant present this evening? Sir, please step forward, state your name and address.
I'm looking for certain Northeast Building Company, 125 West Road, Cumberland, Rhode Island.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, do you want to present anything this evening? We have what you submitted here.
Sure, I mean, I would just reiterate what submitted is fairly self-explanatory.
Okay.
The town bylaws are...and what was presented in the original subdivision plan calls for granite bounds everywhere, and some of the property corners are within three or four feet of the granite, of the PCs and PTs. So if we start to lay in the road out and have these granite bounds everywhere, it gets kind of tough to discern which is which. Additionally, the...on the side of the road with the sidewalk, the sidewalk is right at the property line. So if we had to put a granite bound on the property corner, we'd be digging up part of the sidewalk to do it. So we had submitted this and I was looking at Peter's comments and I...if that's what he wants to do, then that's fine, but my...my only kind of objection to his comments are, we had talked about doing the rebars with the plastic caps everywhere except on the side with the sidewalk, and the reason for that is they'll be right, right, touching the asphalt. If we tried to put a cap on that, we'd have to kind of chisel out a little bit of the sidewalk in order to get the cap on.
Okay.
We're just going to lay it flush. You...it wouldn't get buried with anything because it's right into the asphalt. It's not like a lawnmower is going to hit it or anything else, or anybody is going to trip on it. It would be set flush with the top of asphalt, easily found with a metal detector if someone's looking for a property corner. But if he's firm on that, then we'll find a way to make that work.
Yeah, I don't think he's present today, I don't see him. What's typically done, do you guys know, number two here? So there's three items that were in the original waiver request. One was to set Maris Lane control points, which are the points of curvature and points of tangency as granite bounds flush with the ground. And then, so that was the request. Peter's response was, the approved subdivision plans require the installation of granite bounds along with the roadway. And then, GZA recommends that the planning board approve this part of the minor modification request for the installation of granite bounds flush with the ground along the roadway right of way at points of curvature and points of tangency. So he's concurring. And then on number two, it says to set the front corners of the lots along Maris Lane's sideline as two-foot-long reinforcing bars, rebars, with plastic caps on the side of the road that has no sidewalk and without plastic caps on the side of the road that does have sidewalks. So you would still be putting it on the side that has no sidewalk, right?
Correct.
But you're requesting that without plastic caps on the side of the road that does have sidewalks. Do you have to distinguish which monuments are lot corners and which are street monuments? So that's the ver-
Some of the lot corners are within a foot or two of where the road changes direction. So you'd end up with two granite bounds and it could just lead to problems with homeowners saying, that's my property, no, that's my property.
And that's where...what he requested and what GZA recommended, which as it diverts, he said that GZA concurs with this modification, except that all rebars should have plastic caps. And then finally, on the third one, instead of installing granite bounds at the back corners of the lot, which is a swamp, with a conservation restriction, we propose that rebars be set along the lot sidelines at the start of the conservation areas to clearly mark the limit of the conservation restriction beyond which there is to be no disturbance. And then, GZA responded with, to avoid potential wetland impacts, GZA recommends that the planning board approve this modification request to install the rear property line markers, so he's reiterating. So he's concurring with one and three. Two, he's saying put plastic caps on all rebars, which, you know, I'm tending towards...
Well, I think this is...I drove in there the other day, and I'll tell you, I was aggravated as all hell from the finish work that you've done over there. Every lot in there, the grading after you put the sidewalks in, you created a puddle of water right on the inside of that. And how much harder would it been to actually raise that up? I mean, I haven't been in there for a month or two, so that at least that water would drain. Those people have those...the land, the landscaping was done. You came in, put the sidewalk in, and you left it just like that for a...
Would not be hard at all.
Huh?
Would not be hard to do that at all.
And why wasn't it done?
Because, well, there's one lot in particular. Not here, I figured there would be. First house on the right, as you're driving in, there's no issues on the left, because there's no sidewalk on the left. This is all on the right. So first house on the right, I built, we put the front lawn in knowing that there was a sidewalk to go in. So there wasn't any issues there. Second house, we built, graded it so that it would match. The third house, we didn't build. That's the guy that has all the water problems that go in the back. We've since dug a big dry well in the back trying to get some of that water that's coming off his property to go into a stone trench, and he's given us permission to go back onto the property, and it was kind of late in the year. We go back on there and I said, well, in the springtime, we'll sod it if we have to, but he let us go back out. I thought we had to go eight or 10 feet onto your property to make it work. He has no problem. The next house, I don't know what to tell you. That woman, either one of them, will not let us do anything. We go on there and she goes, no, you can't, Connie, you can't do this, you can't do that. If you're going to come on, you need to give me a paper that says you're guaranteeing all my water problems are going away. I'm like, your driveway has...if it has an inch of pitch on it, I'd be surprised. You could play marbles on that driveway. The water problem was there before we got there. I didn't build the house. I said, let's come back, we'll grade this, we'll...nope, you're not doing anything. I'm not going to give her something in writing, because I'll own every problem that exists with that house from now until end of time.
I understand, but the third house on the right-hand side, that guy is so meticulous about his lawn.
And he's given us permission to go back on, and he said, we'll go back on.
I just don't...I just...I'm so disappointed that...I've actually praised you when you've been here, and all of a sudden I go back there and when I saw that, I go, man, this is as disgusting as it gets for you to leave that like that. If you...if I was developing that and I walked in there or drove in there and I saw that, I said, you guys are going back in there and you're going to grade that the proper way. And you just left it like that. It's winter. Jeff, or whatever his name is, goes and finishes it off, puts grass on it, or you grassed, I don't know. And somebody's got to do it all over again, and I really don't think that's right. There's been so much problems in that neighborhood there for the last 18 years, and I'm just...
We're like the guy at the end of the circus trying to pick up all the problems, and we are, and that will be addressed in the springtime, when it's the right time to be camping and whatnot, and he's on board with that. Otherwise, he'd be here saying something tonight.
I'm surprised that none of them are here. I really am. I mean, they've been putting up with, what, for the last 15 years?
But again, that's not on...
Well, it's not you, but you bought into there, so you bought the problems. You...
I own the problems.
Huh?
I own the problems and will fix the problems.
That's okay, and that's...
But the third house on the right, I have no problem fixing that guy's problem, because I told him, my exact words were, I'll go halfway up your lawn if I have to with lumen seed to make that right. And he's like, yeah, and he had us come back, he said, just touch this up for now so nobody falls off the sidewalk and it...I mean...
He's a very reasonable person.
Yes, and the sidewalk was in the prints from day one. That...all that stuff should have been graded to accommodate a sidewalk. Whoever built the house didn't grade it accordingly. So we are, we'll go back and fix it. And if I have to go on the fourth house, I will. But I need to be let onto that property. I can't just say, well, you know what, I'm going to come on and I'm going to regrade your front lawn eight feet back, because then any water problems that exist, that already exist, well documented, the building official's not here, but he can attest to it. I'm not going to own those. Those aren't...I can't go back and fix all the problems. I'll go back and I'll grade the side of that sidewalk as it should be graded, but...
That's just so we can keep going, that's for these bounds here. You knew about these bounds before you put the sidewalks on. So you should have put the bounds on and then paved around it.
That doesn't change the fact that you're going to have granite bounds every five feet on some of those things. The reason we're changing from granite to steel is so that you can discern between, okay, this one's my property line and that one belongs to the town as to where the road changes direction. There's...if you look at the...I don't have the prints in front of me. If you look at the prints and you look at every place that road, that road is kind of serpentine.
Yeah.
And if you...going up especially on the...well, it's parallel on both sides, but on the right-hand side, where there are more lots on the right than there are on the left, you've got those PCs and PTs and property corners are sometimes within a couple of three feet of each other. And myself, Prime, and Peter all thought that that would be, you know what, it's going to look kind of foolish to have bounds. I don't know, they probably had 14 bounds on the right-hand side of that street, and it was just seemed kind of ridiculous.
It's on the corner of each lot.
But it's also where the road changes direction. So we're trying to...I mean, I don't care if we make half of them steel, it just keeping with the town ordinance, we can make the PCs and PTs granite and make the other one steel so that you can say, okay, you know what, if it's steel, it's a property corner, and the next property corner is 120 feet away. So there's no confusion from neighbor one to neighbor two about what the steel point means. But if it's a granite bound and it could be the PC, it could be the granite bound, it could be another point of tangency, so...
On the Asbilly, you'll have to define which...what that is.
Absolutely, absolutely. But you're right, we did know before we put the granite, and this is not because the sidewalk is in, this is because it's just overwhelming, the amount of granite that would be there in order for neighbors to be able to be left with something that they can easily figure out without having to call an engineer. That's why we thought we'd go to the steel. And the ones in the back on the property, on the line in the back, I mean, we could put those granite, but it calls for granite flush to the ground. And you're on something that's going to be over...some of these bounds are the ones that are required by the...got to draw in a blank, not the border, not the...
Zoning board?
No, not zoning, not...
Conservation?
No, who's the woman that's been...
Lisa Calabodonia?
No, the other lady with the turtles, from the state.
Oh. Mass wildlife.
Yes. They're calling for granite bounds, there is mass wildlife, they're calling for granite bounds also, that we do have to go into the wetlands to put those in. Again, they're set flush. One season of weeds growing up and you won't be finding them anymore. So we figured if we put the steel in, we could leave that sticking up a little bit, and it's...we have to put signage along that line to placate Lisa for what she needs for the do not go past this...she hasn't given us the wording yet, but...
I don't like the...anything sticking up above ground, because a kid walks or runs or falls and trips, he could end up with a serious problem.
So the steel can be put in flush with the ground and easily found with a metal detector?
Yes, a metal detector can find it even below grade, so...
Right.
In my opinion, it has to be flush or then you go to granite bounds. That's my opinion.
Right, that's what we're proposing. But the ones that are mass wildlife in the back, their rules are foot and a half above grade or something, so...
Then definitely not going to be...
They're granite, they're granite.
Okay.
Those are granite.
There's no way I would actually...
No, no, and they're way out beyond where anyone's supposed to go, because that's all do not disturb area.
Okay. And who determines how deep they go into the ground?
I think the code they says they have to be like 42 inches, they're big pieces of granite.
Yes, but I've also seen, and it wouldn't surprise me. Oh, whoops, this one broke, it's all set. Just keep in mind that I won't put up with that if that...
But just to clarify, whether there is or is not a cap, it's still flush with the ground, right?
Correct, all the steel ones are flush with the ground.
Even with a cap, it's still flush?
With or without the cap.
Okay.
That cap is important for that purpose if somebody trips.
If it's flush with the ground, you shouldn't be tripping on it.
And it's still visible, somewhat visible. The only problem is people go and pull them up, you know, that's...
The cap, too. Yeah, so the only difference between his waiver request and what GZA came back with is just that the caps, he's requesting no caps on the ones on the side of the road that have the sidewalk. Without plastic caps on the side of the road that does have sidewalks, because it's going to be in the asphalt, that's the only difference. Any questions, Woody? Concerns?
My only concern is those fine women that you were talking about that live in that house.
Yeah.
I can't really blame them for not letting you or anyone else on their property, everything that they've been through. They're nice ladies.
Yeah.
I seem to be their contact person, because they'd contact me whenever there's a problem. And I would like to see things rectified for them as well as everyone else in the development. I will reach out to them and say that you're willing to do whatever that you do, and to see if I can maybe mend some fences there and try to get that done, because not just them, Craig and everyone else over there has been through living hell. And you know that, you just took over a mess. And I commend you for that, I commend you for that.
I'm a big boy, I can take my lumps if there's something to say.
No, no, I mean, you took over a mess and, you know, make things right and...
It's a lot nicer now than it was when we got there.
Right.
Albeit, it's not finished yet and it's not the way it should be. I don't disagree with that.
But I do not...
But I cannot guarantee though, she flat out told me, you need to put in writing, I'm like, listen, we're doing the best we can, we've had...
They're just looking out for their interests, sir, and they've been through a lot already. I mean, these people have PTSD over what they've been through.
Right, but they haven't been...
I drive through there quite a bit myself.
And they haven't been through it with me. Every time that they've, you know, the street trees were supposed to go, the street trees are supposed to go.
Right.
We don't want it there. Okay, we went back, we took it out of the ground and moved it somewhere else. Some of them we moved over here, but...
I'll try talking to them, sir, you're a very reasonable man, thank you very much. And I'll try to talk to them, and maybe we can somehow get this development out of the planning board's hands.
I would love to see it.
You know what I mean?
Believe me, nothing will clear the...
Ever since I've been on the planning board, that's all I hear about. That's all I have, Jeff.
Anything else, Mr. Higgins? Anything else, sir? Nothing further? Does anybody here that has any comments or statements about this before we have a final discussion and voting on this? All right, gentlemen, before us, we have a request for the minor modification as presented by the applicant, and we got all two of the recommendations from GZA, and I'm tending towards only requiring the plastic caps on the side that isn't on the side of the road with the sidewalks. Does anybody have any concern?
No, no granite bounds at all?
No, no, sorry, I closed.
Good.
There are granite bounds, the granite bounds are PCs and PTs. Point where the road changes direction, that's granite.
Okay.
Where the property corners are, would be steel.
Right.
So that anybody that goes out there, again, at the risk of repeating myself, there wouldn't be any confusion about what the granite means and what the steel means.
Right. Yeah, the only difference between what he's requesting and what GZA recommended is number two, which is just...
A rebar.
Plastic cap. He...GZA came back and said plastic caps on everything, and he's saying plastic caps on the side of the sidewalk wouldn't mean he'd have to gouge out the asphalt, fit them in, I don't want to do that, because then you'd have...you know, ice getting in there, water getting in there freezing, and it'll pull the thing apart and the caps will be gone anyway, it won't matter, and then you don't have a hole for the rebar sticking out, which I prefer not to happen, so... Somebody like to make a motion to approve the modern modification as written in the prime engineering letter?
I'll make that.
As requested?
As requested, because that's the only difference between the two, is just that number two.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, can I motion?
Second.
The second? Any further discussion before we take it to vote?
One discussion, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm sorry, are we doing no caps where the sidewalk is?
Correct, yeah, if you look on his letter...
But everything else, they are going to have caps?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's the only distinction between his request and GZA's responses, that GZA said caps on everything.
Caps on everything.
But if you look at his letter for request number two, he's asking for no plastic caps on the side of the road that does have sidewalks.
Okay, thank you.
So we motion a second? Any further discussion?
I made the request of the Asbilly Plan having all of that outlined on it. In other words, when they submit the Asbilly Plan, everything has to be...
It's required.
It's required, yeah.
Yeah.
A rebar and all of those things on it.
Usually it's all called out, right?
Sure.
All right, any further discussion? Here are none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? No nays, no abstentions, motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry you had to hear it.
No, that's okay, anytime.
So do you have a business cap?
Not on me.
Carrie, you might have your number.
Carrie's?
Yeah.
A phone number, all that stuff?
Email.
Okay? I'll be in touch.
Thank you. Should be on your back there, thank you, sir.
I'm sorry. Joe, did you make that motion, or did...
I made that.
You made the motion, you seconded? Thank you.
It's too late, it's already done. All right, thank you. Order of business is agenda item 4B1, Forest Hills Estates Special Permanent Conservation Subdivision. I believe in your packet, there is another request for continuance. Yep, from Josh Glass, Joshua Glass. Carrie, thank you for taking the time to discuss this. Applicant respectfully requesting continuance to the planning board's January 18th meeting. Do we have room on the agenda for that?
I'm sorry.
Do we have room on the January 18th?
No, I did reply to him and tell him that, told him that he was going to be on the February 1st agenda, and he agreed.
Okay, so it'll be a continuance to the February 1st? February 1st?
February 1st.
Planning board meeting. So somebody want to make a motion to accept this continuance?
Someone.
Motion?
Second.
There's a second? Any discussion before we take it to vote? Here are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's four ayes. Joe, did you vote?
Uh, it's a no.
Okay, four ayes, yeah. No nays, no abstentions, awesome, all right. Next item on the agenda is number five, approval of meeting minutes for December 7th, 2022. Somebody like to make a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion made, second, any discussion?
Aye.
Here are none, all in favor? Aye. Woody?
Yeah, my name.
Okay, four ayes. Mrs. Easterday, is there any correspondence for us this evening?
I do have one.
Excellent.
Item from Clearway Energy, which is for the William Street Solar Project. Hi, Carrie, planning board, thank you for the time spent with myself and Louis Cruz discussing the William Street Solar Project. Louis and I were planning to attend the planning board meeting on Wednesday, which was in December. If you recall, they were supposed to be here in December. We found ourselves north of Boston at 5:00 PM with over a two-hour commute to the town of Dyton. We were meeting with our consulting civil engineer, Meridian, to review the comments from peer reviewer Beta. After meeting with yourself, Todd, and Meridian engineers, we were wondering if...we are wondering, Carrie, if the update below can be added as a public comment to the planning board meeting minutes regarding the William Street Solar Project. Clearway Energy is working with Meridian Civil Engineers to prepare responses to the peer review by Beta and would like to be placed on the December 21st town stormwater committee meeting agenda to discuss the project with Beta and the stormwater committee. Subsequently, Clearway and Meridian will work to finalize updated drawings and plan review responses to be on either the January 18th or February 15th stormwater committee meeting for review. Clearway fully understands that the process of review and approval must follow due course. We are not requesting acceleration. We will be working to receive planning board approval at either the February 1st or more likely the March 1st meeting. We appreciate the coordination with the town stormwater committee and planning board and are committed to completing a successful project with the town of Dyton. Again, thank you for the coordinated efforts on this project. Our intent here is to keep progress on the project moving through the holidays at a normal pace and make sure that we don't lose momentum on approval of the civil redesign. Sincere thanks, Jim Clearway.
We get to vote to accept that?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Carrie?
That's it.
That's it. All right, next item on the agenda is number seven, public input. We have one item there listed, Evan Watson, Lighthouse and Land Surveying LLC subdivision proposed road to access industrial zone property. So when you're ready, sir, if you can please step to the mic, state your name and address. All right.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's Evan Watson with W Engineering.
How you doing, sir?
Address office in Canton, Massachusetts. And I'm here to talk to you about a property owned by Tom Rujoe on William Street. He is looking to do a cannabis cultivation project, and his property is located in mixed use overlay district in the residential and industrial. So this is an industrial use and it's allowed in the industrial zone. So I've added, this is the town Dyton zoning map, and where in this zone, right here, the purple is the industrial, and this green is the mixed use overlay district. I blew it up a little bit here. I blew it up a little bit here. So you can see that the majority of the usable area of the site in the back is all in the industrial. Now, the issue that we have is that any industrial use can't be accessed through the non-industrial zone. And the only area that that can actually be done is here from the south off of Brook Street. And any of the, the access over here on William Street, we can't get there. So ultimately, what we want to do, the project that looks like this. Again, uh, Tom, excuse me, lives right here in this house. Across the street, he has, uh, his farm, the Rougeau Farm, and there's the greenhouses just to the south. So, uh, this is a great operator. They know how to grow things, so they predict it'll have a successful operation here. So what we're looking to do is put some greenhouses out back with the, with an access road that comes up through here. We wouldn't need more than 24 feet, probably more than adequate, uh, coming off of William Street. It's actually a ridge here. It didn't show a lot of detail, like drainage and utilities and things at this point, because I'm just trying to get a little bit of, uh, overview and some input from the board. So this works for our needs, and it doesn't add any, uh, really offense to the surrounding zone. But the problem is, again, we can't access this through this zone. So I'm going to be a little creative here. We took that same project, but instead had a right-of-way that came through here, basically as a private road. Now, we're not accessing from a public street, we're accessing from a new subdivision road from here. This road would provide enough frontage in, 100% in the industrial zone, and we'd have enough area to meet zoning. Now, in the subdivision rules and regulations, a non-residential use requires a collector street, which is a 60-foot right-of-way, 30-foot wide pavement, five-foot sidewalks on either side. So you end up with a massive industrial level, uh, roadway coming through here to access, uh, greenhouses. So you can see that it's, uh, a little bit overkill, especially for this neighborhood, um, and the use that we're serving. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to, um, design a plan which shows this, and I did the two right-of-ways here. One's the 60-foot right-of-way with all the, the width of, uh, 30-foot wide pavement, plus another 10 feet of sidewalks, plus another two for your Cape Cod room. Um, and instead ask for just a regular cross-section of like 22, 24 feet, potentially even gravel surface, or potentially even with, um, country drainage to access the back. What that requires is a waiver of many of your, uh, construction standards for a collector street to do this. Now, what we could also do, because there's no opportunity to develop along the sides of this road, we're not subdividing a, uh, industrial park out back or anything else like that, we could put conditions that if we were to expand to more lots, or if we wanted to extend the road and, and add additional, uh, lots and frontages and uses, et cetera, et cetera, that the road would have to be upgraded. It's very similar to, um, if you had a, a one-lot subdivision on an existing ancient way, the planning board has the ability to basically decide that the way has adequate width and grade to access that particular project. So this would be nothing different, uh, where, again, presenting a series of greenhouses out back is a 24-foot wide road, an adequate line and grade. Um, so that would be the question that I'd be asking the board. And we can still put, uh, leave a 60-foot right-of-way so that if that did come down the road, if somebody did want to add something that was beyond what we're proposing, that that width would be available. They could, uh, come back to the planning board with a, a full definitive subdivision and add that width, and add the sidewalks, and add the street trees, and all the things that are required. Um, but for this project, we think that this would be adequate, and I didn't go ahead and do all that because it's not something that we typically see. And, uh, I've been before, the Dayton Board before, and I know that we don't like to give waivers, or the Board doesn't like to give waivers. And so, uh, knowing that, we met with Kerry. Uh, we described the same situation. She thought, well, I don't want to speak for her, but our discussion, she, we thought it was kind of an interesting idea, and she recommended that we come to the Board and discuss it before we went through and deal with the cost of the design and engineering and things like that. So I'd be curious to hear any of your input. Uh, with me is, uh, Tom Rougeau and, and his team. Um, if you have any questions for him, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
On either, uh, I guess on the left, uh, left side of that, uh, you have the cul-de-sac sort of design there, uh, the entrance. Is that, would you be willing to put non-buildable from that point from?
Like this through here, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, so what would, I think the best way to go would to be create a separate lot in the back by just adding, once we get to the 225 or 250 feet of frontage here, is create a lot line, and then these two lots would not meet zoning, and they would not be buildable. So those would be identified as a parcel, or a non-buildable parcel.
And beyond the cul-de-sac would?
Beyond the cul-de-sac this way?
Yes.
Would, so we'd be looking to get a building permit for that.
For that, but that's it.
So this, we show six greenhouses here.
Yep.
Um, if that ends up being very successful, the idea would be to potentially add some more greenhouses, but the only use would be that cultivation.
But you know additional residential homes?
No, no, no.
Zoned industrial, so.
I, I understand, I'm just, they can come back to, for variances and this and that, you know?
Okay.
We've seen all kinds of things there.
Yeah, I got you.
I'd like to take this under advisement, Mr. Chairman.
I agree.
Um, you know, this is public input. There's no public here. Nobody really knows, knew that this was going on. It was nice of you to talk to Kerry about this, but I'd like to take this under advisement and look it over. You can get on our agenda with a better plan and...
Well, I think that they're just...
I don't want to discuss this tonight, myself personally. Okay, I'd like to take it under advisement.
So, well, I'm not asking the Board to, uh, vote or nothing that, no input that I'm taking from you tonight would be binding. Um, I guess the next step for me, the reason I'm here tonight, is should we even go this step? Uh, would the Board even be amenable to looking at a project like this, or would you be expecting to see an industrial subdivision, uh, with no waivers, et cetera? You know?
I don't want to give you any of those answers tonight, sir.
Thanks.
Well, I mean, I, I'm comfortable saying things like, "We wouldn't want to change zoning for something like this," because that, that's a monstrous undertaking.
That would be Plan B. So the only other way to access this piece of property.
Yeah.
Would to then rezone this piece of property.
Exactly.
As industrial. So that would, that's the only other solution to access that property.
It's a very lengthy...
I don't think that would even be possible, because that would be spot zoning.
That's spot zoning, you won't be able to...
Right, so there's...
Do a whole section.
There's difficulties there.
Right.
Would that, would this trigger having to go for, um, uh, a ZBA?
Yes, uh, well, the subdivision wouldn't, but the cultivation would. So that's, they're the special permit, uh, granting authority, so they're the ones that would be doing the site plan review and granting the permit.
The ZBA?
No, we're the, um, special permit.
No, planning board is...
Oh, planning board is?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I must have read that wrong, I, I'm sorry.
No, planning board is the granting authority for, um, marijuana cultivation.
Okay.
They, they issue the special permits on that.
Okay, so it would be you guys then for the, there is a special permit, and if you are the special permit granting authority, that's who we come into.
So I have one question, because after we spoke, I had a chance today to speak to the building commissioner.
Hmm?
And, um, have you had a chance to talk to the building commissioner?
I have not.
Not yet?
Right.
You did? And did he, when I spoke to him today, um, I had mentioned to him about the access road and, and the road, and he didn't, I mentioned that you were proposing a private way. And he mentioned that he didn't think you could do that, that it would have to be a town-accepted road, because under our definitions for the zoning bylaws, under lot, forgive me, I wrote it down, um, under the definitions, it says, "Under lot area and lot frontage of," under those definitions, it says it has to be a public way. But then you mentioned, um, create a right-of-way under the non-residential way, so it looks like maybe you were looking under something different.
So it's not a residential lot, and it's not in a residential zone, right?
Well, the, uh, under the mixed use, right? So the mi- you have the mixed-use overlay.
Yep, and that, that goes to all the way out to here.
Right, but the road that you're building that?
Mm-hmm.
The underlying is the main?
So in here, it's residential.
In here, that's residential.
Beyond this line is industrial, and I can have enough frontage in the industrial.
For the industrial, but what I'm talking about is the actual road, where you're putting that road.
Mm-hmm.
You have the mixed use, and then the underlay, uh, oh, it's an overlay.
Yep, yep.
Under that overlay.
It's residential.
Is residential.
Yep, yep.
It's very confusing. So just through my brief discussion with the building commissioner, and again, because this is all very preliminary.
Yep.
He was under the impression that it would have to be a public way. I don't know, you may want to entertain some more just deep discussions with him.
Mm-hmm.
On that part, um...
Has it ever mentioned of making it a private way? I missed that.
It wouldn't...
Well, you did mention that, right?
I wouldn't...
You were, you were talking about making it a private way.
I would just say it'd be a private way, I wouldn't necessarily...
How big of a distance is that? What, what's the overall length?
It's less than 600 feet, it, it's just...
To that point?
Yeah. And it's longer than 400 feet, so the requirement for a dead end is between 400 and 600 feet.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to take this under advisement.
You don't need a motion. This is just public input. There's no public hearing.
Okay.
There's no...
All right, so nothing's binding, we don't need to vote or anything, we don't need to, okay.
Yeah, there's nothing...
Yeah, you could, that's, we're a little, I'm a little bit unsure on how to proceed, so I didn't want to get into the public hearing, because we might have been going down the wrong road, so we want to make sure we have just, not really direction, but an understanding of what...
Now we know what you want, so we can do our homework.
Yeah, I mean, I have to say, looking at this, it's a very creative way of approaching this problem, so.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly.
Did you have in mind, you'd take some time and have us come back and, with other meetings, sometime in the future, then have this discussion at that time, is that what you got in mind?
Sure, get on the agenda, but not under public input.
Okay.
Well, my question is, how would you have it then, unless they're having a public How else would that be?
Well, we have a little time now to do some homework, so, yeah, if you could find room on our agenda, then we're gonna...
But it would, it would be a public...
It would be a public hearing.
Because they're, they're not presenting drawings, they're not looking, it's, it would be a non, again, it would be a non-binding conversation.
The way that I, the only way that I could get on the agenda would be to file like a preliminary subdivision plan, um, and do that.
Yeah.
A Form B subdivision.
It would be a formal application.
And the idea was just to try to get some input from you before we do that, because like he says, he does all that design work.
This happens every now and then. People come and they fill us out, right? I don't like being filled out. I'm going to tell you that right now, I do not like being filled out. I like to know what we're working on, what y'all working on, and what we need to do.
No, that's a good idea.
This is unique enough where this is, I think this was appropriate.
Yeah, um, is there a process by which we could get, obviously, there's more communication from the building commissioner in particular, he has information that tends to pertain to this and may drive things one way or another, you know? Um, is there a process by which we can get that input back from him at some point that, as, uh, obviously, you're going to go speak to him yourself, but the way that, you know, just going to have that return conversation?
So, um, we usually meet once a month, like the building commissioner, myself, the Board of Health, we will meet once a month, just, um, kind of brainstorm on some particular projects, make sure we're all on the same page. Um, and we can, although we're not going to be meeting until, it's going to be a while, like the end of the month. But if you could meet up with him, because we're meeting on the 25th, so maybe you could try and say hello before then, um...
Yeah, I think that's just a critical piece of information, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause, I, I'm not going to say anymore tonight.
My, my question to this is if we say that they're able to get those greenhouses in there, they would be taxed according to, what would be the, the tax base on there? That's my...
3% of gross revenue, plus personal property tax, plus...
Are you sure, are you sure of that?
Of course I'm sure. 3% of gross sales.
Well, that would be an accessory, I don't, I don't know that part.
So, right now, the town is getting absolutely nothing out of it, so I think it's worth looking into it and, and try to work.
I don't want to get into it, I could say a lot, but I'm not going to say nothing today, okay?
No, that's fine.
We're not here to worry about the tax money.
Not, we're not, but we're, we're...
We're just looking for more revenue.
Well, marijuana is...
We need more houses, we need, uh, we need more revenue.
The ma- the marijuana market is crashing, this is the end of it. It's crashing.
Yes.
Look at one connection, they're not doing any business.
It's a landmark, piece of property, so how do you feel?
Right, and that was...
So the town landmark, the piece of industrial property here.
Sir, if you could state, state your name and address, please, before you...
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's John Darby, I'm a real estate broker in Totten.
Thank you, thank you.
So the, the question that, that we beg of you is the fact that when, when Tom Rougeau looked at this, he said, "Oh, great, I have an industrial piece of land, be able, you know, build our greenhouses here and go out there." However, you can't get a use variance, so you can't cut across residential zone property to do something in an industrial area. But my question is, the town landlocked that piece of property, so what else are we supposed to do with it?
What do you mean?
The industrial, well, the, when they changed the zoning, they took that piece of property and they landlocked it, so you couldn't get access to it, the industrial area.
I, I understand, how long ago was that done?
50s or 60s? Nobody's been able to answer that question.
We're, we're certainly not going to try.
No, 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 and, and that's, and that's why...
Nobody spoke up at that time, as far as happens, right?
And, and the question, the question, the question is just, just looking for the input as to what direction do you go in, you know? Uh, you know, do we, do we analyze it and look at it and say, "All right, we're going to build a full-blown industrial road going in there?" Well, yeah, we don't... That's why we're here before the planning.
So I think with the input that we have tonight is that it makes sense to meet with, uh, Mr. Aguirre, uh, make sure that what we're looking to do, because ultimately, even if this Board did approve everything that, all of our hopes and dreams, we need to get a building permit from the zoning enforcement officer. So, um, he needs to say that this is all legit as well. So I think it makes sense to meet with him, um, and based off of input from that meeting, uh, the next step would to then be prepare a preliminary subdivision application and submit that.
Do you need a community host agreement for this type of outdoor grill? You will need one.
We're not at that step yet. We were told to do this process for us, because we can't go for the permit until we have this. It's kind of like, it's, it's a circular event.
This one's a very unique, um, it's a very unique, um, situation because of the lack of access to the property. Typically, when we have, um, an individual who wants to apply for a special permit for, um, a mari, a marijuana special permit, I always advise, um, anyone to go for the community host agreement first with the Board of Selectmen because without that community host agreement, they're dead in the water. So I hate to see any of the applicants go through all of this and then go to the selectmen and they say no. So, but this scenario is completely different because of the way they're trying to access the land.
The last time they met here with Attorney Rounds represented you, and, um, there was a lot of neighbors.
That's when they were trying to get the use variance.
That was the community outreach or, I think it was exactly what they call it.
Yeah.
Before you go for the host community agreement, you're supposed to.
Right, right, it was in this room because I was here.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But again, at that point, we didn't realize we had this zoning issue and to get a host community agreement, you have to be properly sold. You can't even ask for.
I knew that.
Yeah.
And, yeah, well, we've been working with town officials and they have suggested to us that just, there were other ways to do this and it turned out there were not other ways to do this, so.
You're going to be careful who you talk to, sir.
We went back to the beginning and it solved his own problem. And there were several ways to do that, this is the one we think makes the most sense.
Okay. Sounds good, sounds like you got a plan for your next steps.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll see you soon.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you all the time, thank you very much.
Appreciate you gentlemen, have a good evening.
I have been in touch with Jim, so he's aware.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we've been talking.
You've been talking to him, so.
Yeah, we'll coordinate, then, then make sure before that's when they're meeting and then.
Yeah, and I'm going to put it on the list now so that I'll make sure.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Before we move on to the, uh, last item on the agenda, ma'am, is there anything you'd like to input? Here for public input, are you here as?
I'm here with them.
You're here with them?
Sorry.
Okay, she's sorry.
I hope, I don't go for the property.
All right, just wanted to check, I saw you back there, thank you.
How long have you owned that property?
It's been on our family since 1927.
1927?
Seven. 1927.
What do you pay on taxes on that property right now?
Joe, they're on camera, they don't have to say that.
No.
We're on camera.
Well, the ironic thing is, it's in chapter 61, it could be actually farmed. So that's all we want to do is farm, I mean, if we can't do this, then maybe.
There's always butternut.
It could be turning into houses or, you know, gun-renew something out there, strip joint. I think that's why they business out there, right?
Yeah, don't, don't.
Keep it off 138.
Don't go there.
Where the money's at.
What, butternut, butternut squash?
Yeah.
All right, uh, last item on the agenda is adjournment.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, Cable.